Ladies and gentlemen, welcome to this work session on February the 8th. This is our Planning Work Plan Work Session, which is something I look forward to every year, and I think it's actually particularly appropriate that this session, we're convening to do this almost exactly a week before our budget process kicks off because in some ways, I think the only resource that is more appropriate for us to be thoughtful and planful about than taxpayer dollars is the allocation of county government. And this question through to our Planning Division, which is doing some incredibly important work for the long run of Arlington County. So I really appreciate our.
Here.
Swap for a minute. Thanks, y'all. I really appreciate our planning team making time for this. I'm so about to see they have so much on their plate, and I think this is a really meaningful conversation. Same goes to to our Planning Commission, capably represented by its Chair, Daniel Weir today. And I'll just note before handing things over to our manager to introduce our staff, what a time of change and an inflection point we're in right now with regards to planning. I think, you know, for generations, the really archetype of planning in Arlington has been gathering the community and stakeholders for two and a half years to do a place-based planning study for a 30- to 40-year time horizon. And I think that is, you know, in some ways will always be the hallmark of our studying, but in others, the exogenous shocks and crises around us are not allowing that type of process to be our dominant form anymore, whether that is the climate crisis, or the crises we're experiencing in the commercial market, or smaller tremors, right, like demands for micro-delivery of goods and services, or changes in how we engage with retail fostered by the pandemic. All of these things are really demanding responses in our planning that is are both nimble and sustainable, which is quite a challenge. So I just wanted to again extend my thanks to the Planning Division to welcome my colleagues in our Planning Commission to engage in this dialogue this afternoon about the calendar year ahead and some implications for the years beyond that as well. So without further ado, over to our manager for introductions.
Thank you, Chair Kristol, and members of the board. We also welcome the return to an early calendar year conversation on the Planning Work Program. And as you'll hear from Mr. Fusarelli, the presentation reflects some key accomplishments since we last met in September to talk about the work plan and some upcoming priorities. On the development side, you'll see many projects currently under review or anticipated to begin review over the course of this year. And we think that shows fortunately a sustained, strong interest in our commercial real estate market here, and consistent with the approach from last fall, and as you just mentioned, after we complete several of our ongoing long-range planning studies, we hope to really focus on zoning studies that will update our regulatory tools and keep us paced with some of the quickly evolving trends you mentioned. The work program, as I just noted, is light on place-based, long-range area planning, and especially looking forward to two very important areas, the two imperatives that can't be stated often enough, is that we must have more housing choices, and we must have a resilient commercial market in the post-COVID environment. So you'll hear more from Mr. Fusarelli about Missing Middle Housing Study and the commercial real estate market resiliency. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Anthony.
Are all our batteries dying simultaneously?
And our long-range plan for microphone replacement.
Oh, mine's not doing it either. Thank you. Bear with me one moment while I bring up the first slide. It's the, you have to press the bottom thing.
But it dies again. It dies again, yeah. Is it the battery?
Do you want to try this?
This one's staying on and has two red lights.
Hold on. This, all right, let's see if this works. If I keep talking.
Mine just went off. You're in good company at least.
Third one's a charm. All right. All right. We'll give this a go. Thank you. County Manager Schwartz, and good afternoon, Chair Kristol, members of the County Board, and Chair of the Planning Commission, Daniel Weir. Today, I am pleased to present the preliminary Planning Division Work Program for 2022. While I am here in person, there are many partners and colleagues across several departments and divisions who are in on the call virtually as well and can be called upon as resources for our discussion later in today's session. The agenda shown here outlines what we plan to cover. I am excited to update you on our preliminary annual work program, hear from Planning Commission leadership on their suggestions and perspectives, and engage in a discussion with the board that will help inform our work priorities for 2022. In terms of approach, I'll share a few insights on the formulation of our work program, then cover the division's ongoing projects and responsibilities. We will then look forward and review the new projects we expect to initiate as we conclude our work on other initiatives. Emerging from today's session, beyond providing a clear understanding of work already underway, we welcome County Board endorsement and input on our proposed work program, and any further direction the board may wish to provide on upcoming priorities. Since our off-cycle meeting last September, we've completed, or are soon to be completing, several major work accomplishments that I'd like to briefly highlight. In November, the Board adopted Zoning Ordinance Amendments, adding flexibility to Columbia Pike ground floor use regulations, and received an update on the Phase One Report of the Missing Middle Housing Study. Our team also initiated the Courthouse West Special Glup Study in December, and we are advancing the Pentagon City Sector Plan, the proposed Marbella Site Plan, and the proposed Elliott Columbia Pike Form-Based Code Project, all to the County Board in the week ahead. But with that, let's review a few key points regarding the approach taken to frame and formulate our preliminary work program. This slide here may look familiar from our last conversation in the fall, and conceptually expresses how we continue to evaluate how our Planning Division Work Program can more effectively and consistently integrate our core mission and work areas with the priorities and values of Arlington County. Generally, we continue to see increased opportunities to realize this in the areas of equity and inclusion, housing affordability, economic recovery and resiliency, environmental sustainability, biophilia, and innovation, modernization, and versatility. Moving forward, we will continue to approach our annual work programs to ensure the initiatives we undertake are truly strengthening the linkages between our division's core mission and Arlington's top priorities. This slide should also look familiar from our September materials and reflects how generally, how we generally apply a racial equity lens as we initiate our work from the onset and as we progress through it along the way. To us, centering racial equity in our work means not just engaging more broadly with community members who are often left out of processes, but we must also keep an eye on how future land use planning and policy recommendations and decisions can help address and affect racialized outcomes of our past decisions. Now, on this slide, we identify a few specific projects underway where there are strong connections with this work, as well as where the Board ultimately will take, may take actions to support these efforts to address systemic inequities in the county's land use and zoning conditions that we have had over time. One new addition to note I'm excited about is the proposed formulation of equitable planning and development principles, really to be drafted initially by our team as internal guidelines, at least as a starting point. And the big idea here is to get more specific in outlining principles we can use to guide our work in ways that ensure all residents of the community can help shape future development and benefit from this development and growth in an equitable fashion. And then, one final yet important thought on our work program formulation is the proposal to move towards an interdepartmental, long-range planning work program targeting as early as next year. And while CPHD planning, we have a distinct role in being the keepers of the comprehensive plan, there are many county departments, agencies, and teams responsible for individual elements, and the long-range planning work informed and shaped by those elements. As an example, our preparations for today's conversation involved extensive coordination with other departments and divisions, reflecting the widespread interdepartmental coordination inherent in our work. And collectively, we see great value in broadening the focus beyond our one division and laying out work programs that include all long-range planning efforts on an annual basis. We believe not only would it better spotlight our collaboration, but would also more explicitly display the shared staff resources that are often extended across department lines to support major planning efforts led by a single group. So we also look forward to any feedback or impressions you may have on this proposed approach later in the discussion. But with this framing, let's transition into ongoing projects and responsibilities across the Planning Division. First, I'd like to briefly present an overview of the Planning Division, which as of next week, should be fully staffed with nearly 30 team members. It's a pleasure and an honor to work with the highly professional and committed staff on the team, and I am particularly thankful to my leadership team, who have directly helped shape the work program we are presenting here today. By way of brief introduction, Aaron Schreiber manages our current planning section, which includes planners on the use permit and site plan teams, with additional leadership of Section Supervisor Matt Pfeifer. Our comprehensive planning section is led by Jennifer Smith, with additional leadership from Section Supervisor Kelly Brown, and includes work areas in comprehensive planning, area planning, and zoning studies and amendments. And led by Chris Kreider, our urban design team provides specialized support to the rest of the Planning Division and other departments, while advancing its own work of port, own portfolio of work. As Planning Director, I work closely with all three teams, and am supported by a core admin team of Joanne Harrison and Giselle Johnson, who also serves as clerk to the Planning Commission. Before looking ahead, I'd like to briefly highlight the many notable projects completed by the Planning Division in 2021. Last year, the County Board approved six major site plan developments, adopted a special general land use plan study for Pershing Drive Arlington Boulevard area, and five zoning ordinance amendments for various districts across the county. We remained involved in the review process for many TOSAs countywide, and as mentioned earlier, together with housing staff, we published the Phase One Report for the Missing Middle Housing Study. Our team also managed the 2021 Design Arlington Awards Program, where winning projects were recognized by the Board in January, and we also designed and held staff webinars and workshops focused on biophilia. In these next few slides, I'll briefly highlight core service areas and work functions advanced by each section. And in addition to managing the review of special exception site plan and use permit applications, current planning staff are also involved in the review and processing of typically more than 250 administrative changes here. The team anticipates working closely with Arlington Public Schools on several identified school facility use permit projects, and with others in the arena of economic resiliency and recovery. And current planning will continue to support the work of the Planning Commission and its committees, for now in a virtual format, and will stand ready to transition to an in-person or hybrid format when conditions allow. It's also important to note that it is through this team's work, in addition to the work of others, on special exception site plan approvals and construction, where the county realizes many negotiated community benefits, provided to meet plan goals and objectives, and also help mitigate potential impacts from development where needed. Several of the comprehensive planning team's core service areas include overall coordination of comprehensive planning, updating sector plans and area plans, and undertaking special glup studies in response to specific requests. This team's also working closely with housing staff on key housing Arlington initiatives, and is advancing various zoning studies and resulting ordinance amendments to support goals of our comprehensive plan and other county policies. Beyond other special planning studies, this team also provides support to the Planning Commission, especially its long-range planning committee and zoning committee, which support was provided during all of '21 in a virtual format. And for our urban design team, they play a significant design support and review role related to development entitlement and implementation, including the review of administrative changes and landscape plans. Where warranted, the team also provides project management for special typically short-term studies, and supports various commissions and the broader community with outreach, education, and other engagement. And as we'll get more into later, the team also provides an array of architectural landscape and urban design services, and much of their work involves supporting interdepartmental efforts and coordination. Moving on, I'd like to now transition us into our final section, where we collectively look at what's ahead. To set the stage, this slide identifies seven key considerations for developing this year's work program. Once again, many of these should seem familiar as the first six were shared in our September presentation, including, for example, the need to continue and complete the division's non-discretionary core mission services, our intention to prioritize timely completion of ongoing long-range planning work, and continuing to support housing Arlington efforts in a phased manner. As we complete major work in progress, we can then prioritize a commencing new work identified in this work program. In some cases, this will involve aligning staff capacity and schedules across divisions or departments, especially where planning work may be in support of the objectives of others, agencies looking to advance the implementation for their own facilities. We continue to look forward to the five-year comprehensive plan review of the comprehensive plan, to not only meet our state mandated obligation, but to also help us further inform our future work plans and priorities. I will note, a new addition here is item number seven, which really speaks to some of our updated thinking on intended staffing for our future work, but really leveraging staff training and professional growth opportunities, thinking more creatively about how we staff future projects in a manner focused more on versatility, and softening some of the boundaries, the traditional boundaries we've had between individual teams or sections. So from these considerations, the proposed work plan presents projects and other work items in the four categories seen here. Our ongoing work generally includes review of active development and rezoning applications, ongoing long-range planning projects, urban design support, and sustaining procedural records management, and other administrative regulatory improvements. In terms of upcoming work, we expect these to also comprise future development and rezoning applications, as well as long-range planning work, many zoning studies, and urban design efforts to address key issues and goals. We also have a spotlight section to showcase more detail around two particularly important areas of work for the year ahead. And finally, before we close, we'll briefly review efforts where the Planning Division staff are supporting ongoing and/or future work being led by others. So for ongoing work, our current planning team especially will continue to manage the review of development applications and related administrative changes. And as a point-in-time snapshot, the list of nearly two dozen projects shown here include those within our ongoing work category, as well as a number of projects that have not yet formally begun the review process, but we anticipate would do so later this year and would fall under our catchment of upcoming work efforts. The team is also wrapping up work to complete an update to our standard site plan conditions, and collaborate further with our permit Arlington team on records management enhancements. On the long-range planning side, our teams are balancing seven active initiatives, and we are working towards the timing completion or progression of each of each of these over the coming year. Looking at the list of projects here, perhaps apart from the multifamily reinvestment study, we expect most of these projects to be completed by the end of 2022 or thereabouts. At the same time, the urban design team will remain focused on supporting design review for development applications and advancing a broad portfolio of other work items, including supporting the PFRC review of Arlington Public Schools Career Center Campus Project, supporting Department of Park and Recreation's lead on the Forestry and Natural Resources Plan, working also with them on the privately-owned public spaces, and coordinating with parks as well on next steps regarding biophilia, and continued outreach and education more broadly. The team will also remain engaged in other inter-agency support and coordination, including items such as public art initiatives, which looking ahead later to 2022 could include an upcoming effort to support AED's efforts to establish a National Landing Public Art Action Plan in conformance with the county's recently updated Public Art Master Plan. When looking at our ongoing long-range planning portfolio, in this manner, we see the anticipated compiled timelines for our work ahead in 2022 as we anticipate them today. Further down, we also see an array of development applications that we specifically expect to come to the Commission and Board in the next few months. And beyond that, we've roughly approximated when projects may be ready or expected for consideration, really based on annualized averages of applications that have come to the County Board over recent years. So all told, a key point here in this view is it's really in that white space to the right-hand side of the chart, following the completion of many of these discrete planning projects, where we, where we will be able to recover staff time and resources to begin work that we've prioritized as upcoming projects, which we will move into now. So regarding upcoming work, our team will be ready to lead the review of future development applications, some of which may also include related policy and regulatory updates. We're also looking ahead to an update of the Administrative Regulation 4.1, guiding the review of site plans, as well as a potential update to our county landscape standards as well. And in the long-range planning arena, our proposed work generally prioritizes four distinct work areas. These include commercial real estate market resiliency, to be covered in more detail shortly, the five-year review of the comprehensive plan, which we expect will begin this year but may involve a phased approach, which we can get into more later. And we'll also be, begin a phased approach for public facility and infrastructure-related zoning studies, which I'll discuss further shortly. And finally, as resources permit, we have two special general land use plan study applications that have been identified for Tier Two review, and one application submitted late last year for Tier One review, which we expect will be initially addressed in the spring. In this slide, we see an overall structure for how we're currently viewing the general prioritization and sequencing of various zoning studies. Broadly speaking, items identified in the first tier are those that we generally anticipate getting to first, followed by a second tier and third tier, but with a few caveats or disclaimers. First, some of the zoning studies within the same larger topic areas may present opportunities to either group or combine sub items where efficiencies may exist. At the same time, some of the larger items might, may not all be completed at once, and may require phasing and sequencing over time, partly according to need or urgency. And with additional scoping yet to come on many of these studies, certain studies that we ultimately view as more timely endeavors, or more, less intensive endeavors from an overall timeframe perspective, could be adjusted, potentially moved up among overall timelines compared to how they are currently shown. That being said, where we sit today among our first-tier studies, we expect to focus initially on portions of the stormwater management, public spaces, master plan implementation, public district modernization, senior housing care and affordability provisions, the future of outdoor dining, and micro fulfillment centers. Relative to the array of potential zoning studies depicted on the last slide, there are several key considerations to highlight. We said this in September, and I think the County Manager said it earlier, but it's worth repeating. We really anticipate the need to limit place-based, long-range planning efforts of any significant timeframe or duration, to really ensure that we have resources needed to address the important zoning studies and zoning ordinance amendment work we've presented today. There is inherently some flex scheduling built into this approach, with the expectation that additional scoping may lead to some adjustments in the exact timing. In the larger arena of commercial market resiliency and public facility infrastructure zoning ordinance work, we may also need to take a multi-phase or multi-year approach, partly informed by certain synergies that we may see among various components. We're also excited about opportunities to continue our collaboration with other staff in the zoning division and housing division, to, to share the load, so to speak, in terms of the full array of zoning studies or updates. And as noted earlier, looking forward to the five-year review, not just to meet our state mandate, but also to help inform future setting of policy priorities for the years ahead. So as we approach the end of today's update, I'd like to briefly cover two project spotlights. The first spotlight is on the Missing Middle Housing Study, where we are working with the community to explore strategies to expand housing choice in Arlington while also expanding housing inventory. Following staff's presentation to the Board of the Phase One Report in November, we are now in Phase Two of this study, which will address policy recommendations identifying the additional types of housing that should be considered, we believe, in various areas of the county. Phase Two recommendations will also be based on study of design alternatives, economic feasibility, community impacts, locational considerations, and other factors. It will include both broad-based and focused engagement during various parts of this. It will include both broad-based and focused engagement during various parts of this phase, and staff is currently setting up virtual walking tours online to build more awareness and understanding that we currently have today in Arlington many examples of missing middle housing, and that they often fit harmoniously with the community and could serve as good examples for our work ahead. Here, we anticipate Phase Two will conclude with a conversation with the county board by July, and we look forward to direction at that point on the housing types that should be addressed in Phase Three. And as we get into Phase Three, staff will be working to develop the zoning and general land use plan implementation components necessary to support the policy outcomes from Phase Two. And based on this phased approach and engagement strategies shown here, we're currently targeting planning commission and county board consideration on Phase Three by the October timeframe. The second project spotlight briefly speak to this afternoon relates to our broader thinking and efforts in the area of commercial real estate market resiliency. And as you've seen, our recent and current work programs have included a variety of actions that all relate in some way to addressing core challenges, such as our high office vacancy rates, short and long-term impacts from COVID, and increased regional competition. Throughout this project spotlight, we wanted to pull together and collectively display the array of already planned and ongoing efforts directed at improving our land use policies, regulations, and processes to encourage and permit both traditional and emerging uses and how to sensibly accommodate them in our community. Beyond that, the main point really to underscore and leave you with here is that in addition to these identified items, we are continuing to think internally and talk internally with our partners in Arlington Economic Development, the zoning division, and others, on identifying, are there additional strategies we need to add to this list for further exploration? And if so, we will look forward to following up through further conversations with this board and others as well. Finally, the Planning Division team continues to support other various planning efforts that are being led by other departments or teams across the county, all many listed here, and will continue to ensure we have the resources on hand to provide appropriate levels of support. So that concludes my overview of the proposed division work program update for this afternoon session. We'll look forward to discussion with the county board after hearing from planning commission leadership, and have prepared the two questions shown here to potentially aid in framing the conversation. So, thank you very much.
So much, Mr. Fusserelli, and thank you to the team who's joined virtually, I know who has been very involved in preparing it. Let me just briefly pause and see if there are any questions for clarification before we move to the planning commission. Any substantive conversation we'll hold for a discussion, but don't want to let, leave anyone with a burning, "Okay, I think we're great." It's, I assume because the presentation itself was so clear. Thank you, Mr. Fusserelli. And Mr. Weir, Chairman Weir, welcome. We're so glad to have you. And I will hand the floor over to you to share thoughts from the planning commission, which I know heard a version of a presentation about this work program at your meeting last week. So, welcome. We're glad to have you.
Yes. Good afternoon. Thank you, Madam Chair and members of the county board. I'm glad to be here this afternoon. The planning commission vice chair, Duvanchi Patel, is here virtually. She asked me to convey her regrets that she can't be here in person, but she is, I believe, present with us. So, you know, this afternoon, I'm going to be giving you some planning matters that we hope can be on your minds and agendas, that can eventually be reflected on the work plans of CPHD and maybe other departments of the county, but generally, wholeheartedly endorse what you've seen from Mr. Fusserelli already. So, but first, you know, I also want to celebrate the fact that we're here. Right over the bulk of 2020 and 2021, you and the county staff and the community shouldered an enormous burden in finding a way to keep the people's business going on at all. The members of the planning commission appreciate, and I think in most ways understand, the incredible operational efforts that were required to find a new way to do what we do. And we appreciate that time is scarce and that those efforts, together with the millions of other new challenges unique to the last couple of years, pushed back a lot of things that we had gotten used to or that we had hoped would happen faster. So my colleagues and I are tremendously grateful to, once again, have this work session so early in the year, both because of how important it is to the substance of what we're doing, but also because with any luck, it might point to proverbial green shoots after a long winter. So that said, I want to go over a few issues that I believe are important to fellow commissioners. Zoning. So at the last work session, Commissioner Latellme discussed the importance of finding ways to allow for alternatives to the site plan process for projects that would allow updates to existing but non-conforming duplexes, triplexes, and other multifamily dwellings within the R Districts. So, you know, as much as it is important to identify ways to end legacies of exclusionary zoning practices, we also have to be certain that there are administrative options for improving or expanding existing multi-unit housing like this. We hope that this is a thing that can be brought, that can be, being thought of as part of or an adjunct to the next stages of the missing middle study. Speaking of that, I want to specifically convey my and my colleagues' enthusiasm for the current timeline for the study. I am going to pay that change about the highest possible compliment I can pay, which is to say how great it is and move along. I also want to commend staff once again, and in every possible venue, for staking out intentions to do away with the exclusionary and ultimately inaccurate terminology of single-family and multifamily homes. It's tempting, I think, to see this change as minimal or immaterial, but it's neither of those things. The difference between zoning for families and zoning for households is as fundamental a matter as the right to choose the people with whom we share our lives. And zoning ordinances are lagging far behind other fields of law, like, for example, family law, in recognizing this. I will never forget when our shared late colleague Eric Gotchal realized, during the middle of a meeting of the zoning committee, that a family of four, his hosting a foreign exchange student, is probably violating the county's zoning ordinance. A group of people who choose to share their lives in ways that don't meet the Mayberry formalities must not, for that reason alone, be unwelcome in the definitions of the laws that shape how their homes are built. Moving along to uses, I had a number of things here to say, but I think Mr. Fusserelli knocked every point off of my list in talking about the resiliency study. The only thing I want to mention is that it is an issue that also impacts residential areas as well. One thing we have learned during work from home is that people have a tremendous ability to run businesses out of their homes, including businesses that retain and hire employees and conduct other uses that are not permitted in a residential area. That said, the ideas from the early 20th century about the sanitary separation of residential and commercial districts may not have been good ideas. Keeping people safe and healthy, yes, but the idea that no one should be allowed to run a consultancy out of their home, or to invoke another thing that I think many of us miss, the idea that there should be no corner stores in the middle of a residential district, these are things that we also want to be thinking about when we think about the flexibility to blur the lines of what, of what might be an appropriate use in a district. Now, I want to talk about outreach. I think this is the thing that's at the, at the core of where the commissioners' hearts are. You know, part of Arlington County's public identity is the inclusion of the entire community in the process of considering big changes. But the events of the past few years have emphasized real blind spots in how people in power, very much include myself in this, maybe authority but not power, or power but not authority, I don't know, have historically thought about who counts as the community and who doesn't. I know that there are a number of efforts within and without of county government to increase outreach to and representation of people who are historically underrepresented in Arlington processes like the SPRC, and we love these efforts. I think that the struggle here is that these challenges are bigger than what the Planning Division or CPHD can do, either by authority or by capacity. At the same time, we can't afford to not get the issue right. Every time that we go to hearing, without having found a way to give same consideration to the concerns of impacted communities who haven't and who have been historically underrepresented, that's one more time we didn't do right by some of the people in our community. So one thing I'd like to suggest is that there very well may be ways, both inside the SPRC process and out, to build up the voices of people like renters, in the same way that the county has historically relied upon, for better and for worse, its relatively unique institution of civic associations to express the interests of single-household homeowners. I want to say one thing about transportation as well. Last time we were here, we briefly brought up the idea of modulating or compartmentalizing updates to sector plans in order to solve certain kinds of problems, the elephant in the room being Boston. But the problems that Boston faced aren't alone. At the time, I suggested the more modular approach, but the problems that we face look less and less like the problems that sector plans are designed to solve. The buildings, the rights of way are where they are, and the very few and very few of the big goals can still be realized, except on the margins of a few properties. I've said to friends and colleagues that Boston is all out of Clark Bell Streets. The, but that doesn't mean that there aren't real issues in places like Boston. I and colleagues maintain that east-west pedestrian and bicycle connectivity across Glebe Road will continue to be the fulcrum on which Boston works west of Glebe. I don't think that the obstacle is width. When I talk to critics of Glebe Road, I like to point out that Broadway at Columbus Circle is wider and busier, and yet somehow, people keep crossing it to get to places like Fordham University on Lincoln Center. We have the tools to make Glebe or Arlington Boulevard work, but it's possible that these tools don't live in sector planning. A possible alternative that I would ask you and, and staff to consider would be for the Planning Division to work with transportation planning to develop targeted and needs-based transportation area and transportation, very, very lowercase m, master plan, because that's obviously a word that we already use, area plans. But move forward, we must. So, these are just a few items to raise, and I commend Mr. Fusserelli and colleagues for the work plan presented today, and look forward to further conversations. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much, Chair Weir.
Sorry, Madam Chair. One more thing that I promised Ms. Patel that I would say is that the conversation, the issues that I raised about diversity and inclusion and representation are very much issues that she and I and other members of the planning commission are discussing amongst ourselves. You know, it's, I'm not here to tell people to get their house in order without a very, I'm not here to tell people that period, period, but to the extent that anyone is hearing me saying that, I implore people to also hear me saying that, that me and my colleagues and the chairs of the various committees are very much inward-facing on some of these matters as well. Happy to say more about that if there are questions along those lines, but I think that we have a number of things to cover in the remaining time, so thank you.
Excellent. Thank you so much, and thank you to Vice Chair Patel, who's with us virtually as well. We really appreciate the thoughtfulness and the input from the whole of the commission that you represent, as well as your comments. If you wouldn't mind staying close, I think, and we're playing microphone musical chairs with working microphones, so I may have Mr. Fusserelli come back, but if you wouldn't mind staying close, and I imagine my colleagues will have some, some thoughts and questions for you, you as well. I know I certainly am going to use your comments as a jumping-off point.
I'm anxious just to get out of the way in case Mr. Fusserelli has the next questions.
Perfect. Thank you so much. And so I think we may want to pull back up the questions you had posed to us, Mr. Fusserelli, and so colleagues, just as a way of organizing us, I think we perhaps want to spend a little time reacting to any individual priorities that we've, we've heard articulated, how they fit together as a whole. What I am going to aim to guide us towards by the time we conclude, about an hour and 15 minutes from now or less, if needed, is to see if we can't make some recommendations ourselves about this work plan, whether we're prepared to accept it and endorse it entirely as it's been presented, if there are different flavors or spins we might wish to add to some of these priorities, or if there are, in a couple of cases, some rearrangements of priorities that we'd like to recommend. So, broad discussion, opportunities for questions, reactions, and then I'll aim to get us towards some recommendations. So, so let me begin. I think I saw Mr. DiFranti's light on first, and Ms. Garvey will go to you next. Thanks.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is in the first category, Mr. Fusserelli. It's the musical microphone. It's the, the question is about the Plan Langston Boulevard work, and I noticed it said that you had, on the slide, it says there's a, it could be quarter three or could be quarter four, if I'm not mistaken. And I wondered if you could just share a little bit of, kind of, what's in play there. Clearly, there'll be some engage, further engagement, but I just wondered if you could share what sort of determines how that is likely to fall out, not a strict date sort of thing.
Yep. No, thank you for that question, and I'll try to be brief here, but I think a lot of it just depends on, or a lot of it tries to capture where we are currently. Our staff and consultant team are working to prepare a preliminary concept plan based on the extensive engagement that we had for the better part of 2021, but also incorporating a number of analyses. And so as we complete that important work, you know, we are looking forward to having a preliminary plan to be able to share later this spring. Once we have, you know, more specific timing around that, we will, we will certainly communicate that more broadly. But just understanding sort of the remaining steps in place to have robust engagement on the preliminary plan, thinking through potential refinements and adjustments, we are at this time anticipating, you know, third, third to fourth quarter as being, I think, a feasible target for us to, to have something for the commission and the board. So.
Great, thank you. And I, I'll have other questions, but I'll pass the mic.
There we go.
All right. These are a challenge today. It's like they're gremlins running around in these things. Let's see, I'll, I'll try one sort of question, one observation. First, generally, I really like what I heard today, both from you and from Mr. Weir. I mean, I just feel like we're in a qualitatively different place and where we need to be heading, so I'm just delighted with so much of what I heard. One question that I should have asked during clarifications, which I realized too late, and that, could you elaborate just a little on what biophilic cities work means? I mean, I kind of understand the other things, but this is sort of new. Could you just talk a little bit about what, what that kind of entails?
Certainly. I'll try and add broadly, and we also have either, you know, Chris Kreider here or Eric Beach, whom he'll be able to speak in more detail if he'd like. But, you know, following the county's inclusion as part of the biophilic, biophilic cities network, we particularly DPR and CPHD have been working closely on identifying sort of what actions and what directions we should take based on that. So, in '21, one of, I think, the important collaborations between parks and planning was really standing up workshops and webinars for all staff, although webinars were for all staff and the workshops were a select group of staff, to better understand and think about how biophilia and biophilic design can be incorporated into our work more consistently. And so as we look to 2022, we are actively thinking about what, what should we take on this year in terms of, is it broader engagement with the public, with the community? Are there other things we should be advancing internally before doing so? So, I don't know if that answers your question, or perhaps I could call on.
A little, a little bit, yeah. Would it entail things like the bird-safe glass, which keeps coming up all the time? Is that part of it?
It could potentially. I know, I understand it's also, you know, links into their sustainable design and lead requirements. But the thing about biophilia, I think, and I might ask Chris to, to speak very briefly on this, but I think it, it's broad, very broad-based in terms of it's not just this really sort of narrow kind of slice of what we do, but it has the potential to interplay with much of our work, so.
That's great. That's what I wanted to hear, kind of. So, thank you. Yeah, no, a lot of, and I love the pedestrian ribbon. And one, and then one quick, you asked on the, the cross-cutting, I think it was slide eight, all of these departments. So just to add one more, possibly, you might want to consider adding, actually, emergency management. You know, it gets into the flooding and, I mean, there are all kinds of things that, that happen, moving people around, I, I don't know, but that just might be a department that possibly ought to be under consideration too when we're looking to the future.
Absolutely. And I don't think I spoke to it, but I think on slide 27, there is reference to the hazard, I think, mitigation plan update that emergency management is working in. So we're, that's one of the areas in which we're trying to support, you know, the work being led by other agencies.
Excellent, excellent. Yeah, you put it on here and get credit for it, too. That'll stop me for now. Thank you.
Excellent. And we'll go around the room. I think, Mr. Karen, try even quicker on the draw, and then Mr. Drusy will come over to you.
Go ahead.
Okay. Oh, let's see. It works. Thank you, Mr. Fusserelli. That was quite a, a presentation, I have to say. Very, very thankful. It's also very well organized, and it's very user-friendly to go through the priorities and what's going on, when it's, when it is going on, et cetera. I have to say, I have to say, personally, I didn't, I think that on Langston, we have worked for a very long time, and many of our, you know, constituents have been working for a long time, so it is, it's good to see that we are in the final stretch, but it's a really long stretch. And I understand that, I mean, on the other side, I commend you for giving the appropriate resource focus on the missing middle study. They are not so unrelated at the end, and so I understand that. I have one, one question that's more of a framing question. What I hear a lot from constituents and from people who, you know, communicate with us on many things, on site plans, on everything planning-related, and everything that affects the built environment, the way the built environment, you know, interacts with people, is the increased concern about how do we build our greenhouse emissions goals into that? How can we, there is a, the general concern that we are, we don't accelerate enough. We don't, we don't push the envelope as we should, given the climate emergency right now and given the other goals. Mr. Weir referred to, you know, the focus on cycling and pedestrian networks as a planning element, not just as a, you know, environmental policy element. So, and we've, we will find it in front of us in every single plan here, every single. So, how are you planning to accommodate this concern, this, you know, this focus that we, you know? I definitely get it from every constituent right now. This is the number-one question.
No, thank you for the question, so just, I want to make sure I heard it and understood it clearly, but the question really being, you know, how in our work are we going about doing as much as we should be doing in the arena of managing growth and development relative to advancing our sustainability, community energy goals, and, you know, goals towards reducing climate impacts? Is that a fair paraphrase?
Yes, this is a fair summary.
No, well, I mean, and thank you. It's obviously a very important question. I think a lot of it comes, you know, the, this answer, I think, will try and hit a couple of different angles, and I will phone a friend, so to speak, in terms of asking Aaron Schreiber to speak a little bit to his work, and his team's work on the current planning side. But, you know, we certainly have our county-adopted plans as it relates to the Community Energy Plan, we have the implementation components of that, and we also have built into our development regulatory standards, you know, Green Building Incentives Program. Clearly, we are hearing that many in the community think that, you know, that those incentives don't go far enough, and so to the extent to which those conversations need to continue and need to evolve, you know, those standards or those incentives are updated on a time, you know, from time to time. So, I may ask Mr. Schreiber at this point to speak a little bit more, as he may, to, you know, how we're addressing that, particularly as part of the development review processes. Thanks, Aaron.
Sure. Good afternoon. So, just for the record, I'm Aaron Schreiber with the Planning Division, and specifically to address Mr. Karen Tornas' question, Anthony is correct, we do evaluate our site plan proposals regarding conformance with or implementation of the Community Energy Plan, which is one of the elements of the comprehensive plan. We do have an implementation component of that, which is the board's adopted green building incentive policy. However, we recognize that that is an incentive-based policy. Not every developer chooses to utilize that, but where projects don't, we still look to the goals of the Community Energy Plan, and we partner very closely with the folks from the Department of Environmental Services, not just on implementing the Community Energy Plan through the green building incentive policy, but also looking for additional elements. One of those was mentioned earlier by Ms. Garvey, and that relates to bird-friendly glass, so not just working with developers to include the bare minimum component of bird-friendly glass, but also looking to see where we can expand that. And you'll see an example of that come forward soon, for example, on the Penn Place project, where we worked with that developer to increase that, considering that as being a significant sustainable design component. But also getting back to the partnership theme, that is something we continue to do with Department of Environmental Services. In fact, we're working with them on some efforts related to electric vehicle charging spaces and how those fit into some of our parking space components. So, again, it's a collaboration, but it is looking to the board's adopted plans and policies and how we implement those on a project-by-project basis.
Thank you, Mr. Schreiber. A little bit related to that, but different. So, I saw that one of the items is introducing lead standards in the Form-Based Code on Columbia Pike. Is that for both Form-Based Codes, the 2003 and the 2012? I mean, they both don't, so I guess it's, it's one element that would go into both.
Right, and that's a good question. I might actually ask Jennifer Smith, who may have some additional background on those conversations. I understand that this has been a particular item that's been identified as a zoning study for some time, so that she may, I'm hoping can speak more clearly to the specific question.
Okay. Thank you, Anthony, and good afternoon again. Jennifer Smith with Comprehensive Planning. We have identified a review of the Neighborhoods Form-Based Code regulations, excuse me, of the Commercial Centers Form-Based Code regulations, as that is the zoning tool that does not currently have a specific green building standard built in. We do have a specific standard in place for the Neighborhoods Code, so I think that we would be specifically targeting the Commercial Center Code.
And this would be just the environmental sustainability, you know, parameters. There are no other elements that we would be reviewing at the same time? Like, for example, I don't know, affordable housing?
Well, we have talked about that in the past, the fact that there is not a specific affordable housing element or requirement in the Commercial Center Code. As we are presenting the work plan for you today, we are anticipating that the review would be focused on the green building standards, but happy to take additional feedback here today, and thinking about, should we, should we be looking further beyond that?
Thank you. In my opinion, it's worth, I mean, I don't know how, I mean, you have literally bigger fish to fry right now. I get that, but since we are working on that, the perspective of harmonizing the two Form-Based Code is, for me personally, an exercise worth pursuing at some point. We have a healthy project pipeline in the Commercial Form-Based Code. I think this is okay, but at some point, I think, something that is already 20 years old next year would need a review. And I think that, you know, the Neighborhoods Form-Based Code has introduced many new things, among them, the, you know, linking density to affordability, et cetera. There's also an equity issue, and I do believe that it's about time to at least engage in some thinking about that.
Thank you, Mr. Karen Tornas. Excellent. Mr. Dorsey?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd like to focus a little discussion on the racial equity and inclusion area. That's okay?
Yes, please.
So, first of all, let me just say thank you. I think this is really a, you know, pretty, pretty robust way to address and think about equity and inclusion in planning, and I very much appreciate it as an emerging initiative that you're going to work on developing some internal policy guidance on how we actually do this. You know, I know that there are a lot of resources, and it's really growing by the month, it seems, of people who are taking a close look at this as it relates to land use planning and areas under your purview, so I look forward to that being developed. A question, though, about the initiatives themselves, and I'll first start with just a question. If you can share a little bit about what you're intending with how to apply the four questions and our current equity lens with the 4.1 regulation updates, what are some of the opportunities you're identifying there?
Absolutely. Thanks for the feedback and that first question. Yeah, I think on the 4.1 applications, you know, there's a couple of components to it. There's, we've been having conversations both internally with planning and then, within planning, and then with our, the county's chief race and equity officer, Samia Bird, who's been tremendously supportive to us throughout. You know, how can we think differently about the composition of the SPRC, and, you know, who's at the table, and is there a consistent thread from project to project, or does it vary? So, we're actively engaged in those conversations. When we're thinking about the site plan developments themselves, right, an area that we, I think, continue to focus more and more on is in the arena of community benefits, right? And so, you know, as we are sort of looking at and considering what potential community benefits could various development projects provide, you know, again, all projects kind of have their own specifics, so some are better suited to provide more, you know, or can more easily provide certain benefits that really, really make a difference in race and equity goals. And then in others, we might have to work a little bit harder and really kind of think through what are some of those connections and linkages we could make. But, you know, for example, when we think about community facilities or elements of community facilities that might have some type of focus on serving kind of underserved populations, there's conversations there. So, happy, you know, if you wanted more detail in that arena, we might be able to speak to that, you know, with assistance from Aaron or Samia, but that just provides, hopefully, an overview of some of our initial thinking.
Oh, it's helpful. Thank you. So, the next observation, you know, when we look at some of the things that you teed up, you know, those are all on our current agenda, those are all things where we will certainly want to make sure whatever equity lens is applied, but at the same time, we recognize that many of the people who have been impacted by land use policies for decades don't actually live in areas that are governed by this work, whether they be current site plans or some of the major initiatives that we're working on. So, the question is, are there any ways that you can, you can think that we could organize as, as an organization to, to deal with some of the longstanding issues that have, you know, been associated with land use throughout decades that are not governed by active projects that have been submitted, which is in some ways a reactive way of dealing with things, but how to proactively look at land use conditions that may not be consistent with our best thinking, merging priorities, and figure out how we tackle those prospective kinds of plans?
That is a, that's a great question.
I try.
And I'm not sure how much time we have left in today's discussion, but I, I think that's something we continue, continue to grapple with, right? And I think when you look at some of the studies listed on this slide, whether it's missing middle, whether it's multifamily reinvestment, whether it's Pentagon City Sector Plan, Plan Langston Boulevard, you know, many, or if not all, of our long-range planning efforts, I think one of the significant challenges, but opportunities we see in our work is, you know, how to be planning for the future for those who aren't necessarily even here today. And it doesn't necessarily get at, you know, perhaps those who are personally or specifically affected by past decisions years or decades ago, but I think the more we can think as a community of how can we really be the inclusive community that our vision statement sets forth, and recognizing, it's this balance, right? It's a balance between engaging the community of today and potentially the communities that are currently residing in those areas, and not, you know, discounting their perspectives and listening and hearing genuinely, but also recognizing that a lot of these plans are, you know, for many years or decades ahead of us, and if we don't stay focused on providing opportunities for others to be accommodated in that growth, I think that's a missed opportunity. So, I'm not sure if that really gets at your question at heart, but that's something that I know we've been thinking a lot about internally.
I mostly wanted to seed it for further thought and follow-up and willingness to work with you on that, and that's, that's a great way to think about it already, so thank you for that. If I could just throw one more on there?
On the same topic?
Yeah.
Great.
Thank you. So, I thought about this in reflecting upon the upcoming Pentagon City Sector Plan, and, you know, there, we're doing something that's fairly consistent with practice, but being a little bit more explicit about the affordable housing contributions that we're looking to see occur from redevelopment. And, you know, as I look at it in total, we're doing a pretty good job of making sure with analysis of new projects, we are not creating new inequities, and that we are making marginal progress on dealing with some of our wicked problems that particularly affect racial and ethnic minorities and low-income Arlingtonians. But, and this is not a dismissive but, it's a contrast. We realize that all of those efforts, really not at the scale of the problems that we're trying to address. So, achieving success doesn't necessarily mean that we're going to be making great global progress towards our overall equity principles. So, to that extent, recognizing that a land use plan, a sector plan, it guides what people propose, and while developers, investors want certainty, and therefore, they tend to figure out what the community aspires, and they plan around that, to figure out if they've got a feasible project that they can deliver, is there room for us to be a little bit more aspirational in what we want from things? You know, here's what we'll accept at minimum, but here's what we desire to see if we're really going to be delivering projects to scale to deal with the issues that we're trying to address. We do a great job of establishing the minimums, but we don't really do the other thing. And is there room for us to maybe think about plans that can be delivered that way?
I think, I think there may be, right? And if I understand, I think, the setup and the question accurately, I mean, taking the example of Pentagon City, you know, I think that if the, it should be noted that if we're, if we choose or elect to be more aspirational in certain components, depending on sort of the entire balance of what we're looking to achieve, that may kind of re-shift kind of the dynamic of things. So, for example, the way that that plan is set up, you know, could the, our affordable housing goals perhaps be more higher than what they are set forth? Certainly, they could be. I think we would need to recognize the trade-offs that perhaps what the project and development is looking to achieve by way of some of the public realm improvements or other community benefits, we might need to sort of reset our expectations in that arena, if that, if that makes sense. So, there is a kind of a push-pull relationship, and I think it's, you know, we deal with this challenge at the area plan perspective, we deal with this challenge at a site plan perspective, where, you know, we're, you know, Aaron and others are looking to make recommendations on the community benefits, and there's always this balance we're looking to strike, and in some cases, you know, certain components are, get, you know, perhaps more than, than others.
I do appreciate that. I think there's probably room for different interpretations there. I mean, I think in the evaluation phase, you're absolutely right. One thing comes at the expense of another when it comes to what someone is willing to pay for, but at the same time, if you don't have a clear understanding about what we may like to see in a project, it's really hard to deal with it after you've kind of developed it with a certain framework in mind, which is usually, which are usually the minimums that we, we set down in stone. So, I get it. I think, I think there's going to be room for more discussion on this as well. Thank you.
Yeah, this is, such an interesting conversation to listen to. I was thinking about, you know, the Pentagon City Sector Plan does a really good job of explicitly calling attention to the dynamic that's true in every sector plan, which is the balance between predictability and flexibility, and that's largely true for the applicant. And I think what I would, what I'm thinking about, as you talked, Mr. Dorsey, is there's sort of an inverse with residents, which is the difference between, or the balance between predictability and aspiration, because it is hard to communicate the aspirations of the community without implying that they can be counted on to be delivered, right? And I think what's really helpful about our sector plans as written now is, it's pretty clear, there's some predictability. If the community says they aspire to more green space or more tree canopy, and this plan says 20% tree canopy, certainly we would aspire to more, but if we codify that greater aspiration into our sector plan and then a project falls short of it, you know, have we created a, conditions for disappointment among community members is sort of the balance I see between aspiring to more but being clear about what it is we can assure the community a given, a given project would.
I completely understand. I think, Ms. Crystal, that... I think, Ms. Crystal, that the only thing that I would say is a, an add-on to that is that as soon as we ink this plan or any other, we move forward in time and community expectations grow anyway. So the plan, if it remains in stone, becomes disappointing on a prima facie basis. So that's, that's always going to be the case.
That's a great, that's a great point. Well, I wanted to.
Contextual parameters are changing too fast. I mean, we are through two years of that.
That's true as well.
Climate change, equity, pressure to, to give solutions. So contextualizing aspiration is a tough one. But we shouldn't, you know, step back from taking on the task from time to time and say, this is the direction, right?
Well, and for my part, I think, you know, a lot of times the, the aspirations sometimes live elsewhere within our comp plan, right? I mean, I think about, for example, the decision we're seeing now with, with Penn Place, which is not a great example because the sector plan hadn't been adopted at that time. But with Met Park before that, right? It, it certainly outstripped what had been encoded in those land use plans, but it was very, in terms of the environmental benefits, but they were very consistent with what was in our community energy plan. And similarly with affordable housing, I think most applicants know that they can take a big swing at affordability beyond what maybe is conceived of in a given sector or area plan because those aspirations are well qualified or codified within the H and P. But it's a great point. And I didn't mean to take us too far off topic. I wanted to jump on the points about equity and equitable planning. I loved the points you were raising, and I think colleagues also had things to contribute. I, for my part, wanted to just add an appreciation for, for the conversation between both the Planning Commission and Mr. Fisarelli's comments about equitable representation in SPRC. And that's not just about making sure the faces around the table look like Arlington. I mean, that really is about trying to bring divergent lived experiences to the processes. And so I wanted to just flag, as I know our planning staff knows, the, the board allocated a, a small amount of ARPA money, relatively speaking, to a pilot for, to, to study what it means to compensate folks for participation. And compensation very broadly determined and defined, right? Whether that's childcare or meals or transit fare or anything else. And so I just want to highlight, I know Ms. Byrd is already sort of scoping out and thinking about that. Personally, I think the SPRC is a perfect place to try out some of that work because I think our departments, planning included, actually know pretty well how to get a diversity of opinions out for a one-off, right? Come help us vision the future of this park and, and come out for an afternoon, right? We, we know what it takes to get divergent perspectives. What is really hard is please come sit at this SPRC table for four weeks, six weeks. And so, you know, knowing that we have this funding, that we are really eager to study how we can overcome those barriers and, and that this aligns so well with, with the goals that both our Planning Division and Planning Commission have, I, I would love to just tee that up as hopefully a potential marriage. And then Mr. Ferenti, I think on the same topic of equity, right?
Yes, actually, it's just a thought that the discussion is great. I sort of feel like, you know, the conversation is where you say, explain it to me like I'm a third grader. And so the thought is, is there a sticky idea on the two different equity-related topics that might move the whole conversation forward? So is there like one specific proactive, non-planned area, but that is in need of planning attention? If we threw that out, I bet it could help. And, and I don't know that specific idea, but, you know, as you brainstorm, that's, you know, one way to move from the important theoretical construct that you've created to, to something. And similarly on the aspirational front, I bet if there was one way in which we could articulate it, that would be, that'd be wonderful. So that's all I had on, on, specifically on equity. I have one question and one comment, but I can.
If you don't mind, I'm going to actually insert myself with a couple of unrelated questions, but I want us to play out the equity conversation.
No, mine's tangential and probably moving us on, so.
Okay, excellent. Well, if you all would indulge me in, in sort of this first round of questions, so, or maybe reactions, I guess, you know, one of the big questions on the table for us, as, as Mr. Fisarelli framed up so well, is, you know, how, how do we feel about moving from as this capacity frees up on, from long-range planning, you know, kind of redirecting that to these, to these more kind of meeting the future-type zoning studies? And so for, for my part, I, I feel very confident with it because I think that the identified zoning studies, those needs are so significant and they, they aren't, you know, idiosyncratic zoning studies. These are studies, as Mr. Weir put so, so well, really speak to the heart of our futures of the community. So I feel great about that shift overall. But I do, it does beg for me two questions. One is where, where is Barcroft in this? Where is the, the capacity that we'll need to make sure that, you know, Barcroft isn't just sort of a standard form-based code exercise, but rather what I think we're all hoping it will be, right? Which is an opportunity to really revision acres and acres, right, of the future of the Pike with mixed income housing, for example, while preserving all the current affordable housing, thinking about kind of the relationship of retail or any public facilities implications. Seems like that takes capacity, right? So, so how have you all thought about that in that shift away from traditional long-range planning to more kind of zoning ordinance and modernization-based work?
No, thank you for the question. And so as it specifically relates to Barcroft, with the tremendous opportunity before us, the conversations that I've had to date with housing staff and the housing director, it's, it's my understanding that a lot of collective effort over the next year is going to have to be put into, you know, among the development team, put into developing a master financing and development plan, which really might take the better part of the next 12 months. Beyond that, I think it's an open question in terms of what level of additional planning or updated planning is needed. The conversations that I've been part of lead me to understand that, you know, a lot of sort of the perspectives to date about what could happen with the property were in fact based on the neighborhood's planned vision. So could there be some further adjustments and fine-tuning along the way? I think that's always a possibility. But at least within the next 12 months, I understand a lot more focus will be on developing the specific financing and development plan from the development side, as opposed to needing to get into any additional planning work in that timeframe.
So just to push on that a little bit, do we, would you say kind of in your professional judgment that the, the neighborhood form-based code that that master development plan will be sort of roughly based on would give this applicant and then Arlington's interest to enough running room to propose something that, that is pretty potentially relatively transformational, right? I don't think I'm, I'm way outside what we've talked about in terms of our aspirations. I guess what I'm, what I am asking, or my, my, let me frame it as what my worry might be if we don't dedicate resource, dedicate resources to this on the front end of sort of setting the box bigger and more aspirational to Mr. Dorsey's point. Does that mean that we're going to get a proposal from the applicant that it is, that is sort of relatively constrained? What is the right relationship of, of sort of getting out ahead of a proposal and versus getting that proposal and reacting to it vis-à-vis that goal of having a really ambitious vision? Do you see what I'm saying?
Yeah, I understand the question, and, and thank you for that. I don't know that I'm well enough informed to opine. I do know, I don't think our housing director was able to join this afternoon, but I do know we have Richard Tucker, I believe, and I think Russell Denno Schroder from Housing. I'm not sure if either of them would be able to provide, you know, a response in part, but I see Mr. Tucker, so I'll, I'll turn it over to him.
Hello, Mr. Tucker. Thanks for joining us.
Hi, good afternoon. Well, I, I think, I don't have a lot to add, but I do know that based on the, the master of finance and redevelopment plan, we may learn more about, you know, what we, what, what potentially needs to happen on the site in order to achieve all the goals. I think when the form-based code or the neighborhood form-based code was developed years ago, I think the potential for separate development on, on the redevelopment side and then conservation on other parts of the site was imagined, and maybe they were two separate things. I think looking at this site holistically, and again, the goal being to preserve affordability of all the units that are currently there, and maybe in some other form, may lead to other understandings about what needs to happen on the site. So I think a lot can play out in the next year as we come to understand that more. And then we'll have to take a look at that when we have more information.
Okay. Well, thank you for that. And I, Mr. Dorsey, on the same point, or?
Yeah, I just want to echo your point that on, on some level it would be great if we developed the capacity that whenever we feel that the, the owner of the property is ready to sort of move forward, that we send clear signals that while we understand that you're, you're solving for X, develop some capacity. You know our vision, you know our desires, they're experienced in building communities that are, I think, similar to what we would ideally like to see here in Barcroft. Take a swing. You know, obviously we don't want them to get so invested in that that they give us something that is unapprovable, but at the same time, conceptually, take a swing at what you think works best. If it's not how you're currently constrained, I would hate to lose that opportunity.
Thank you. And so on Barcroft, and if not, we'll go around for another round of querying.
I would just say, different way of framing, Barcroft was next on my mind. And the, if, if not this year, I would hope that when we're together next year, I would think that there, it would be a chunk, a, a significant chunk of the work plan. And, and I could be incorrect in that one, but that's, it makes sense to me that, that the year that we talked about when we worked on the agreement might take more than this calendar year. But I, I, I hope that next year at the least, and before if needed, that some resources on the planning side, in addition to the housing side, could go towards that. Because it seems so linked to equity. There's no better sticky example than that one.
Thanks.
And if I could just add to that, because I think it was great, really great points. And, you know, I think we will continue, you know, housing and planning staff will continue to talk well, you know, after this meeting and daily, if not weekly, going forward. So as we continue our engagement, if we find, you know, before sitting down here, 12 months from now to share our work plan, if there is a need to kind of revisit some of the timing so that we can maybe perhaps think more aspirationally about Barcroft and that opportunity, we would, to the extent we have updates to share, updated thinking, we'd be happy to keep you all apprised of that and engage as needed.
That's great. And I should say the fact that we can even have this conversation about Barcroft reflects the reality that staff has not been shy about seizing this opportunity. So I feel very confident that, that we've got the team who will make sure that the, the owner of the site doesn't trim his sails from what he could imagine. So that's great. Ms. Garvey, over to you for another round.
Okay, thank you. Well, I, I really liked the discussion. I keep kind of having a little bit of light, light bulbs kind of going off a little bit. It, it's occurred to me that so much that zoning, I think it first kind of came to be 100 years ago, kind of. I think that's when we started really doing zoning. And so it was to put into place, and when people set laws like that, it's mostly because they want to keep things the way they are for them because it's working well for them, the people in power. So a lot of these zoning things have been set for the people who were in power and doing really well back in 1920, whatever. And we're finally trying to break out of it, which is really good. I, I love Mr. Dorsey's point and all of our discussion about being aspirational with Barcroft. Barcroft is an incredible opportunity. So this board member too, you know, I think, dream big, blue sky, let's think about what we want for the 21st century, don't get stuck in the 19th century. And then, you know, we may have to trim our sails a little bit, but I, I think it's, it's a fantastic opportunity to do that. So everybody should know that there's, I think, incredible support here in this board to do that. As you're moving forward in, Missing Middle has struck me as being so much actually another way it all comes together. Because we're trying to fight and deal with this box that we got delivered, you know, given to us 100 years ago that hasn't been working well now for this. And that, that the definition, what's the definition of a family? That's a great question that Mr. Weir brought up with the, with the Planning Commission, we're zoning for families, we're zoning for households. I mean, that's a really good. So with all of that, I just, you know, I, I just to throw again something else into the mix, I'm hoping with Missing Middle, we'll actually dip our toes a little bit into the whole lot coverage issue, and maybe a lot. Because that is something we hear from, again, it's people who, you know, usually have been here and they've got beautiful, you know, trees and tree-covered neighborhoods and small houses on big lots. And they want to keep it that way, which I totally understand because there's a feel for the neighborhood, except that doesn't balance necessarily with some of the things we're trying to accomplish. Missing Middle, I think, is going to try to really go right down that narrow, that narrow path. And I think looking at what we're dealing with, with trees, lot coverage, the feel of a neighborhood is going to be part of that. I've often been struck by, you know, we talk about parkland. There are areas where the houses feel like, you feel like you're in a park. And actually, Fairlington, I'm in a Missing Middle park, but because there's so much green space, I feel like I live in a park. It's great. So I don't worry so much about parks and playgrounds because I've got them right, right there. And that, that kind of setup is really, is really nice. You don't want to get rid of that. You don't want to get rid of the trees and things, but we also have to do the balance. So I just toss that out as again, another issue that I think we'll be looking at with Missing Middle. And it all kind of, I think it's all going to come together with this Missing Middle issue, actually. The zoning, the exclusions, the, the lot coverage, keeping things the way they are. Anyway, this is a fun time to be involved in local government, that's all I can say. Thank you.
Great. Thanks, Ms. Garvey. Just to continue with questions, Mr. Karantone, or comments?
Yeah, on Barcroft, definitely, this is a, it's a big question mark. The new owner, you know, has about, they have been in charge about a month now. They were very aggressive in saying that they wanted to have a plan by the end of the year. This was them saying that. And so I do believe that also from a, from a point of view of public engagement, I, I do believe that the residents in Barcroft expect from us some sort of framing and direction sooner rather than later. I, I understand that this is complex. It's really a very, it's an entire neighborhood. It's a new neighborhood in Arlington. It's Barcroft number, number two, so Barcroft Apartments. So that, that has some pressure behind that, and I, and I, I don't believe that we will be able to serve that without the staff resources in place for that. That's a, that's a challenge definitely. On the other, what, what Ms. Garvey has touched upon on the lot coverage issue and the issue of McMansus, I do believe that, you know, there was some very interesting narrative in the, in Phase One of the Missing Middle study that was pointing out in the, in the reading materials, the, the companions. So that, that we have already, you know, about 10% or more of our total single-family home stock has been replaced by buildings that are like three or four times bigger and that the, the pace is about, you know, 200 plus, 250 or plus or more, you know, permits per year. So this is not a slow-moving problem. This is a rather fast-moving problem. So what, where, where does it belong in the list of priorities in, to, to just deal with that?
So I, so I actually, thank you for the question. I think that to some degree, we will, you know, that, that, that pattern that we're seeing, right? The roughly 200 plus or minus tear downs and replacements of larger single-family homes countywide on a yearly basis, I think was something that was reported out as part of the, like, the, the compendium of reports leading into the Missing Middle study. And I do understand that as part of our Phase Two work, when we look at economic feasibility of potentially different housing typologies, I believe we are also going to be looking at that feasibility in relation to the feasibility of the status quo. So where we go from there, I think, you know, we, between now and October, we might have a better handle of some emerging recommendations. But I do expect that that will be considered in some way as part of, as part of that effort and potentially, you know, others as well.
Yeah, thanks. Mr. Dorsey, other questions or general, great?
The entire thing?
Entire thing.
Oh.
This work session is your oyster. Whatever's on your mind.
I regret saying that.
Go ahead.
Did you want to jump in on that same topic?
Well, I can help fill, not intentionally me filibustering, but I can provide you some time to think through and wrap up.
Well, I was going to say, I actually have quite a few more questions myself, too. Forgive me. Yeah, I think, I'm, I'm going to try to keep an eye on it. But the, a couple of questions about looking at this, I think this was Slide 23, the relative prioritization of the different zoning studies. I, I will admit what is informing my, the questions I'm about to ask about the prioritization of two higher priority studies is my desire to see that childcare ordinance amendment move on up from at least first to second tier, if not to first tier. So let me ask questions about a couple of things in that first and second that, that my instinct might be to say, if not de-prioritize, then to at least aspire that they might be faster. The first is the, the S3A study. Can you talk to us a little more about what's involved there and what that is, how big the lift will be, et cetera?
Yeah, thank you for that question. I, I can give a broad overview, but I think actually if she's available, I might ask Ms. Jen Smith to speak a little bit more specifically to, to the questions on what is envisioned within that, within that body of work.
Okay. Okay. Hello, Ms. Smith.
Hi, again. Sure. So certainly, of the three items that you see on the first tier, the public district modernization is the one that has not had as much time and attention with other interdepartmental staff as norm under management and PSMP. But part of the thinking with the public district modernization is similar to what was done a few years ago for Arlington Public Schools, whereby there was a path of creating use permit approval for some public district, some public uses whereby the board could give some flexibility where needed through some modifications. And right now, that's not really a path where in most of our public districts where the uses are by right and you're very limited to height setbacks, et cetera. So that's, that's one thing that we would be looking at, how we could extend that flexibility to county facilities, not just leaving it limited to Arlington Public Schools, which have that flexibility. But we have heard from our colleagues in some of our other main agencies, Department of Environmental Services and Parks and Recreation, about there may be some needs to look at the zoning ordinance and create some additional thinking in terms of how we regulate public districts. Are we, do we have all of the right uses identified in the zoning ordinance for where we may need to have storage or equipment at readiness around, around the county? And do we have some of the right regulatory framework for, for those uses? And how could we possibly update those so that we can do that through administrative review where possible, without having to require a use permit in some locations? Some of that, again, is knowing that we typically bring our public facilities through a review with a public facility review committee and with other community engagement, which would certainly give the community a good understanding of what those public processes are and projects are, where you wouldn't necessarily have to rely on just zoning change, zoning approvals at the end of the process. So hopefully, that gives a little bit more context for that particular piece.
What I would find helpful, not to prolong this conversation now, I think what I would find helpful is if you all wouldn't mind following up with just a couple of kind of use cases about what type of work within the enterprise is being hamstrung by our current S3 regulations. I will admit what I, my thought is that we could spend a lot of time trying to update the zoning ordinance, but the reality is, if it's, if we have wickets that are sticky, because, for example, we're talking about storing light-duty vehicles or some, some issue, you know, that the surrounding neighborhoods are going to have issues with, we're still going to have that same problem, even if the zoning ordinance amendment allows for kind of a swifter path, or zoning ordinance allows for a swifter path than a use permit. So I think I, but if you could, just in follow-up, give me a couple of examples of, you know, here's the use that we're, we would currently like to cite in X place, but we're hamstrung by the zoning, the zoning code right now, or having to get a use permit for Y project, added time and money, you know, that type of thing. Like, just kind of give me a sense of what, what types of projects and uses would be advantaged by zoning ordinance amendments, I think would help me understand the need for this zoning study more. Does that make sense?
Yes, and we will follow up. Thank you.
That would be fantastic. Thank you. And then the other one that I, you know, just flag was the, the major minor site plan amendment threshold review. I love that we're doing this. I think it is absolutely the right thing to do. I guess I'm interested to just know how big a lift that needs to be. Like, what is the work there? Is it, is there a lot of stakeholder engagement to be done? Is it, you know, a significant county board and PC review? Just more on, I mean, frankly, I guess to say, my instinct is, I suspect there's a lot of really good thinking within the planning team already about what, how this could look different. And we could all maybe just kind of review those recommendations. I don't know that it needs to be a really full since zoning study, but if there's any more you wanted to say to help me understand there.
Yeah, and for that question, because I think it's a good one and a good example of where some of these studies perhaps may not take, need to take as long as others, or the engagement may look differently, or it may look differently in terms of particularly who is most interested. But on this item, I may actually ask Mr. Schreiber if he would want to speak briefly to perhaps some of the current thinking to date that would provide more, more information of what you're looking for.
Great, thank you.
Great. So I'd be happy to address this. This is something we've talked about previously. But the idea here would be to, to focus on some of those, those categories that are embedded in the zoning ordinance, to truly define the difference between major amendment, minor amendment, and then ultimately, if it doesn't require a minor amendment, what it can then be considered by approval of the zoning administrator through an administrative change. And so really trying to focus on some of the use categories and some of those thresholds that, you know, I wouldn't say that they don't provide a public benefit through the review, but maybe those can be considered in a less demanding manner. I think there are a number of site plan applications that come before the board that sometimes may cause questions in terms of, is there really a need for this additional board action and additional time for those applicants? So that would be something for us to scope and to focus on, but really, the intent is to really focus on the thresholds and really define where is it necessary, or where do we feel that it's necessary as a community that these items rise to the level of significant community engagement with the Planning Commission and/or the county board. But that is the idea behind it, and it also ties in nicely to the theme of commercial resiliency and really looking to assist the commercial arc vacancy issues and allowing for additional uses or even repositioning of buildings in a, in a less involved manner through the, the site plan review process.
And to be clear, I both understand and fully and emphatically endorse the objective you've just described. I think this is absolutely worth doing. I think the questions I had was sort of the scope necessary to get to these recommendations. Like I said, I sort of suspect between you and your team of planners, you could come up with some pretty good criteria without having to scope a whole zoning, zoning study to do it. So, but it sounds like you guys are going to give a little more thought to that scope, what all could be entailed. So I can wait for that conversation at a later date. Let me do, go back to Mr. Dorsey now, and then Mr. DiFranti, did you get another thought? And Ms. Garvey?
Sure. I actually wanted to go to, yeah, on this slide, as we think about the senior housing work that we're doing, can you just give us a sense of how long you think that will be? And the reason I just bring it up, we know that we have active thoughts about bringing that kind of product into the county. And it's, it's one area where we think just broadly about where Arlington is underserved. It's having opportunities for seniors to move into the product that I think is newly popular, where you provide different stages from independent to assisted to memory care. We really don't have a lot of options for people in Arlington. So if you could just give a general sense of how intensive and how long you think that work will be?
Absolutely. I might actually, again, ask Mr. Tucker to speak briefly, because he, this is one of the zoning studies where, you know, Housing Division will actually be taking the lead and will be providing some level of technical support on the zoning end. But I'm sure Richard will be happy to respond.
Sure. Mr. Dorsey, the issue at hand is that the zoning ordinance doesn't really address the full range of, of senior housing or elder care facilities in terms of there being two components, both the housing and the services component. And so what we're going to try and do is structure a process that is fairly quick to, to make that adjustment to the zoning ordinance, both for projects that come through via site plan and via Columbia Pike Form-Based Code. So a shorter process, hopefully, we're still working on the scope right now and understanding, you know, how we want to attack this. But a shorter timeframe, hopefully, between now and the middle part of the year, we could, we could structure a process to get that completed.
Thank you, appreciate that.
Great. Mr. DiFranti?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'll just, first, Mr. Weir, I just want, rarely have four or five words been so well-spoken as, "I'll be brief on Missing Middle because I'm in wholehearted agreement." And so I think that credit, and, you know, our chair is leading on this, and I'm just grateful you mentioned that. And so I don't want to waste a lot of words, but it's very, very important to me, as well as all of us. And then, I just, I want to give an opportunity, if you or Ms. Patel wanted to speak to any of the internal work, we've talked about SPRC with respect to equity, but I wanted to sort of give at least space for either or both of you to speak to some of those issues. And last, before we do that, so that you can gather thoughts, I'll just say, I, I share the thoughts that Ms. Garvey and Mr. Karantounas mentioned on lot coverage. I don't, I know that'll come in the context of Missing Middle, but I do share that hope that we can make some progress there.
If, thank you, Mr. DiFranti. If Commissioner Patel is still on, I think that, that I want to defer to you initially because I'm looking into the ether, because, just because of the conversations that you and I have been having about this, if you're on.
Yep. Thank you. Thank you, Chair Weir. Good afternoon. I apologize for not being able to be present in person. As many of you know, I am experiencing some, a family emergency. So I appreciate the ability to have a conversation with you all virtually. And again, I apologize for not being there personally. As Daniel had indicated, we have been having really deliberate, intentional conversations around equity since last year. And specifically, the Planning Commission's responsibility in, in making sure that we hold true to the ideals that have been set forth by this county board in its equity resolution. So some of the work that we're going to be doing specifically is looking at ways to provide formal training to our commission members. As, as the county board knows, we are going to have some of our more senior members of our commission start to potentially transition off the commission. And so as we look at onboarding opportunities, ensuring that we have historical understanding of where we've been, and as Mr. Fussurelli put on the slide, I think it was slide seven, some of the questions that we need to be thinking about when we are concerned, when we are considering issues such as diversity, equity, inclusion, and belonging. So for our, our internal discussions and our consideration, it's more than just looking at who's missing from the conversations, because that's, that's obviously one area that we can be considering when we're looking at each individual project, specifically around what our outreach methods have been, and what we can do, you know, to increase those outreach methods, including continuing engaging in, you know, the hybrid work that we've been doing with it. We can think about in-person, virtual opportunities, additional website opportunities where we're asking for comments. But more specifically looking at, as Mr. Dorsey said, some of the more aspirational work we need to be thinking about as well. You know, the census provides really great information to us, and what's going on in our community in terms of what we look like. And so as we think about what our needs are and what our future goals are, I think the Planning Commission and the commissioners want to be really deliberative in our, in our discussions regarding all aspects of diversity, inclusion, belonging, and equity. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. Patel. That was well put.
Thank you. Just, it strikes me as, the answer rings particularly true in light of the 1918 and 1919, when, whatever the case was that struck down restrictive covenants, and three years later, the start of Euclidean zoning. And so just, that answer feels, resonates, and I just appreciate it very much.
Thanks. So why don't I do maybe a round of concluding comments, Ms. Garvey and Mr. Weir, stay, because I think if you have concluding comments from the Planning Commission, I'd love to include that in the conversation as well. Ms. Garvey, I don't know if you had more?
Sure, yeah. I could keep, you know, with questions, whatever. I think concluding comments is probably fine, but I'll kind of wrap it up, if I will. I did want to, and I'll, I'll talk with staff more, on the resiliency studies, I thought Mr. Weir raised a really good point about businesses and homes. And it is part of this need for flexibility that we've got. So, you know, I'll be interested to see how this goes. We've got, we've got these huge buildings, we've got people that need places to live, the buildings may be empty, we need some flexibility. We've got people that need to be home to take care of their kids, and they need to be working. And so just, you know, I could go on and on. But the point about that is resiliency, it's important, and please be broad in how you think about it, I think. I think that was a really good point. I loved your number seven addition of professional growth on, on what you're doing with your work plan, because this discussion that we've had, I mean, zoning and things, it's so much been people that you kind of get in silos, and you think about what you're doing, and suddenly it's so clear, people can't do that anymore. They've got to be thinking about lots of different things. And that just doesn't come naturally without some staff development and some time talking with other people. And I appreciate you making that a priority, because I think that will really pay off, and it, we often don't. So thank you for that. I would like to support our chair's mention of childcare, and like to see that moved up. It did occur to me, looking at public facilities flexibility, we might slip in a little look at childcare there. And then the, the, looking at flexibility on the, the upper store, upper floor, and lower retail, whatever, let's slip in a little childcare there. So I'd love to see that moved up as well, if we could. And I think that's just it. I really do appreciate the discussion. It is an exciting time to be involved in, in what we're trying to do here. And we're really trying to move ourselves, I think, out of the 19th and into the 21st century. And it'll be a little bumpy, but we're all kind of aligned, and that's exciting. So thank you.
Thank you so much. And we'll include you for purposes in this round. Thank you for helping start us off, and any concluding comments you wanted to make.
Sure. I'm, I'm extremely heartened by everything that has been said. One thing that I want to go back just a little bit and add one little asterisk to, not an asterisk at all, an additional item to what we just heard from Commissioner Patel, which is that in her and I conversations so far, I think we're both keenly aware that a lot of that onboarding and training is going to have to be led and done by members of the Planning Commission. And certainly, there will be an ask at some point for, so staff continue to do, to continue to do the kinds of onboarding work that's been done before. But in a lot of ways, we're talking about, you know, a more formalizing of a mentorship type thing. And I don't want to say anything that else that might be, well, there's not a whole lot more to say, but, but I don't want to say anything that, you know, anymore to undermine the impact of what Commissioner Patel added. The only, I think, thing that I would add and wrap up, other than how heartened I am to hear about everything so far, is, that has been said today, is to hear, I think, that to a person, all five of you have expressed some, just in the last couple of hours, some, something similar to the idea that the Form-Based Code is, for Barcroft Apartments, is, is more like a floor than a ceiling, and that, that we really need to be very deliberative in how we, as a community, engage with the, with the stakeholders, which, which necessarily must include the residents of Barcroft Apartments. But to make sure that, I think, Ms. Crystal, as you said, that it's a transformational opportunity for, for the county and for Columbia Pike. And so, you know, any, any mention of, of making sure that we take all the time that we need to get that right is appreciated by me and my colleagues, because it's going to have 100-year effects. So I think that that's the only other comment that I would offer and wrap up, other than to thank the five of you and staff who are present, and others who are tuning in, and my colleagues for participating today. So thank you.
Fabulous. Thank you. Mr. Karantounas?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, Ms. Fussurelli, and the entire team for, for the thorough work and conveying actually how, you know, your department is, is planning to use the time and the resources this year. I think this is really eye-opening. I do believe that in all things that we discussed today, there are three items, I would say, the Missing Middle Study and Plan Langston, and also the multifamily investment initiative, that for me is the one that transcends to already to the next year. They, they offer the opportunities to really look ourselves into the mirror and, and take stock on what we want to accomplish. These are major changes that you are working on, and I respect that a lot. And I think they deserve the, the resources, all resources we can dedicate. And we will learn a lot in the process. Now, I started my remarks with, you know, raising the issue of sustainability, and I will continue to do that. I do think that we need to frame our action and our planning in a more, in a more precise, visible way, the same way we do it for equity, where you, and where the, the work plan delivers quite, quite, quite well, with, with the caveat of Mr. Dorsey, that we probably have to expand into more territory and be more- and be more equitable even in this, which actually I expect from the missing middle study to give us some good opportunities to do that. So I do think that sustainability right now is a major issue. It's also one of the most significant risks that I see in front of us. So trying to push the envelope there and being honest about, and upfront about what resources or additional resources may be needed for that is to me critical. Every single thing that we will be making decision, making decisions on this year will be here at the horizon of our sustainability goals that are going to be more critical as we go. So I couldn't stress high enough how important this is. And this is actually, you know, kind of the base fabric of planning here, for me at least. So with all the rest, I am looking forward to a very intensive and hopefully gratifying year. We need to make sure that we engage our residents as much as we can, especially those who haven't been at the table. And, you know, I don't remember when we mentioned that, that it's also about deciding who will be living here. You said that, Ms. Fusserelli. So yes, we are making these decisions today, and this year is full with decisions that, you know, really affect the accessibility of Arlington in the near future. Thank you.
Thanks. Mr. Dorsey.
Thank you. I am thrilled to see this level of thought that goes into the yearly work plan, and I think it will have, you know, longstanding sort of benefits to us as we consider future years. Terrific work. One challenge, though, that I do think we're going to have is we operationalize the equity piece of including more voices, particularly to answer key equity questions like how do we know for the assumptions and assertions that we make, will be the inclusion of people who have hitherto not really been a part of Arlington County planning. And if we're all honest, or at least objective, the way we plan is fairly dense and technical and not necessarily easily graspable by people who don't have a background in it, particularly if it's an ad hoc kind of engagement to get involved in a process. So I would love to have you all think about ways in which it's through either graphic representations, data visualization, I don't know what other tools can be utilized to better make it more welcoming for people to come in so that they can truly give us the level of participation that's going to inform good equitable planning. It's something that, is something that we could probably do throughout many lines of business and county government, but particularly planning. You know, over the years, we develop a comfort with it, it becomes facile and easy, but Lord knows, we have to acknowledge that for people who are not part of the, you know, sort of the planning world, this stuff is really, really difficult. So, thank you.
Good point. Excellent. All right. Well, let me do my level best to see if I can summarize some of the takeaways. The first is, I think, across the board, you're getting a yes on the shift from place-based long-range planning to modernization and adaptation of our zoning ordinance with, I think what I would describe as maybe an asterisk on Barcraft. I think there is an interest in seeing some capacity put towards this, as Mr. DeFranti noted, and as Mr. Karantonis noted, there is a desire to show the framing of the process to residents at Barcraft in particular. So I hope that there'll be, or I think we are asking that there maybe be some room made in the plan, although I think, I speak for all of us when I say, we're delighted to know that there are ongoing conversations between planning and housing, delighted and not surprised. I think we're, it sounds like we're all really glad to see, of course, the capacity from our zoning studies. A couple of things to flag there, or to emphasize or put a finer point on in summary there, Mr. Karantonis' point about, you know, the sustainability elements, the Form-Based Code being a priority for this year and next, with which I associate myself. I think we, I had signal maybe a little more interest in more information on the necessity or the use cases for the S3A zoning study, and also more understanding of the scope of the major and minor amendments and how much time that would realistically take. And I will also note that just that there is some interest surfaced among board members, I think, as well as the Planning Commission, on what I might describe as kind of zoning study-related issues to missing middle and the RA districts, whether that's the kind of non-conforming existing middle that Mr. Weir talked about that I would associate myself with, or the lot coverage issue. I am putting that one on the table because I heard three voices in support of it, and I want to be faithful to the process. I do however want to take the opportunity to just signal my reservations. The issue of the teardowns that we are seeing rampant across our low-end city neighborhoods are, to me, a symptom of a disease in Arlington, which is that our land is very valuable, there are no alternatives in vast swaths of the county to building one house per one lot, and you have developers who are looking to make, to recoup their investments and make money, and they can. That is the problem. The teardowns are a symptom of that. And talking about lot coverage is basically saying, well, if we make the Band-Aid for that symptom wider instead of longer, you know, will it fix it? And so I think we could spend a lot of time on the lot coverage issue, and I suspect that previous iteration of the lot coverage study, which I was not around for, took a lot of time, and maybe we will make the Band-Aid wider instead of longer. But I think the underlying, the underlying issue that is causing that symptom is the fact that we do not have enough housing in Arlington. Property is very valuable, and developers are going to find ways to make money off of those two things. So again, want to be faithful, I think there was interest in the lot coverage issue, and I think that's one we should therefore discuss in the year ahead, but also wanted to signal my own take on that. More positively, I think there is unanimous support for the focus on equity plans in development. A lot of great conversation there. I think a ton of support for Mr. Fusserelli, what you and your team are already thinking about in terms of changes to current planning, both regard to your thoughts on the SPRC and the equity lens, bringing that to community benefits. I think there's definitely some interest there. Just, you know, really thrilled to hear the seriousness with which the Planning Commission is taking it. I think it is, inspiring is not too strong of a word for me to use. I think the only other commission I've seen embrace so much their own role in furthering the equity goal is the Arts Commission. And so that model of, you know, we're not just going to recommend to the county board what they should do differently, but we're going to take that to heart in our own practice, and also recommend to the county board what we should do differently, was really meaningful. And I really just commend you and Vice Chairman, or Vice Chairwoman Patel for the efforts there. And then I think that the only other thing to not lose in summarizing recommendations was there was a very good point, a couple of very good points from Mr. Dorsey, that current planning, you know, SPRC, community benefit site plans, might be the sort of most obvious place for this, but let's not lose sight and in fact push ourselves to figure out how equity shows up in our longer range of future planning, as well as communications, and how do we recognize that sometimes the way we communicate about land use is its own barrier to entry. So the third thing that, again, I think is unanimous in terms of feedback is, thank you. This is always just a reminder of exactly how much work is going on and the effort to not only say abreast of, you know, just that list, for example, of current and upcoming submissions, right, would be enough, without all of the long-range work, as well as the efforts to sort of apply that lens and that overlay of equity throughout. It is a sign of how much planning staff has on its plate, how much our commissioners have on their plate, and we truly appreciate you. And Mr. Fusserelli, as Ms. Garvey said, it's a time of enormous change and opportunity, and I'm so glad that we have you at the helm now. So unless I've missed something, I am going to look at, oh, 501, I really need to adjourn us then. All right. Because now we've gone over. Thank you all so much, and we will see everyone on Saturday.